When they watch me, they have a lot of activities to do now. Okay, Colin, we'll start with you.
Hi, board members. Thank you for three minutes of your time today. I wouldn't leave all that on my mind because I have no idea how I can do math. I don't need to budge to do anything anymore with the changes in lots of young students. So wishing you all the best and not giving that credence. Of course, I'm here to talk about Roosevelt, but I have kind of a good little spin that I thought I would share with you today. And it's valuable, not just for Roosevelt, but for life in general. So I know that we've got, there are concerns. I always think of this as like a rock and hard place or two different strong points of view that are just, and this point of view of the district feels like it's one that's never going to budge. And a lot of that, I know, is the fear of what could happen with the property in the building if it were to change hands and go to someone else. So what I wanted to share is the fear of what might happen shouldn't blind us from what could happen, especially when there's a real opportunity on the table. So it doesn't have to be an either or situation. It's not either demolish the building to eliminate your risk or sell it and lose all control. It's also not protect the district's future or preserve the past. There is a middle round. The proposals that we bring forward, it's about offering a plan that really helps everyone, benefits everyone at the table, generates revenue, brings in families, and brings new energy to a space that otherwise could sit empty as far as we know or don't know. And the way I see that is not a threat to public education, it's an extension of it. It's a way to support students and families and the broader community and a way to reflect innovation and stewardship. The example I wanted to share and where this gets back to like not just Roosevelt, but think of Lego. So in the early 2000s, Lego was found itself in a crisis, right? They're outdated and leadership thought they had, they're a dying company. And they thought they had one path forward. Abandon the iconic bricks and go because kids weren't playing with them anymore and chase after it. Digital toys and video games and flash and punch and dice. The more they did that, nothing worked and they were on the verge of losing everything and collapsing. And then someone asked a better question. What if the answer isn't to tear away from what made us great but to build on it? Lego returned to its core, invited innovation and rebuilds, literally and figuratively, without losing what mattered most. And we can do that here. Roosevelt doesn't have to be a risk, it can be a resource. It doesn't have to be a liability, it can be a legacy. And you don't have to change your mind, I'm sure I won't change it in just these few minutes of time. But I would ask you as leaders and neighbors to just open your minds a little bit and think about what's possible. Great leadership isn't about holding out to the single answer. And sometimes it's just having the courage to imagine a different one and ask some different questions. So that's my feedback today.
Thanks, Colin. Item number six. Number four on our agenda is our high school food service equipment review. Mr. James Bellamy, Senior Superintendent Facilities and Operations. He's making his way.
Making my way to the podium.
Les, did you get 7:20 out of clothes?
Pardon?
I said seven twenty.
Good evening. Last April, the board approved a renovation project for the high school kitchen. We accomplished that work along with the transition center. So as you remember, we talked about, we knocked out some walls, we enlarged the kitchen to make it more usable and functional. And at the time, we had mentioned that we were going to come back to you with requests for equipment, new equipment to go into the high school. So that's what we're doing now. The timing is right because we're trying to avoid potential tariffs. Obviously, most of the equipment is stainless steel and that's one of the things we're concerned about. So we did hold a bid opening last Thursday, April 3rd, and we received two bids, one from Burkitt and one from Stafford Smith. Now Burkitt was the same company that provided our elementary and middle school food lines that we approved back in October of 2023. They did an excellent job with that project. They are the low bid at $276,995. The plan is to purchase the equipment now. They would store them at their warehouse and then we would, we'll have another little bid package as far as utilities and things that need to happen in the kitchen to hook them up. But that would happen in the summer of 2026. So this is to purchase all the equipment now and then have it ready for summer of 2026. We did, there was a third bidder, Great Lakes Hotel Supply. Their bid did not arrive to us until the following day, so it was after the bid due date and that was a UPS error. But to be fair to the two contractors that did get their bids here on time, we did hold a public bid opening. But like I said, the bids were pretty close. Burkitt was $276,995 and Stafford Smith came in at $307,645. So we would like to, we're going to ask for an approval to Burkitt for that dollar amount. And this is funded from the Food Service Excess Fund Balance. So we do have approximately $2 million sitting in that account. And that is all prescribed through the state. We have to apply for these projects, they grant approval, and then we submit the paperwork at the end of the year during the audit to them to verify that. But that does not come out of the general fund.
Just to be clear, an excess food service fund balance has to be used on food service. Like we can't use it, we can't say, oh, we need computers or...
We can't pay some food workers more, it's only for equipment. Yeah. Like as an example, one of the items in here is a new dishwasher. If you can believe it, on a high school, the size that it is has no dishwasher in the main kitchen. So we are adding a dishwasher. It's a very expensive piece of equipment, but it's needed. I mean, a lot of pots and pans. Yeah, those type, it's a ventless. The other, well, the other big piece of equipment in here is we're putting in a new walk-in freezer and fridge inside the main kitchen. So that will be, that's part of this package also. And a lot of other little equipment. It's all itemized in the bid that you have in your board docs.
When you get a bid on the equipment, does that include the installation?
It's, yes, it's installation, but there are, like I said, there's, some of the equipment requires a little more expensive. Like we have to cut into the quarry tile and trench in some new drains for some of them. So there will be a smaller bid package coming along the line for that work. But this is the installation of that equipment too. Most of it's just plug and play.
Well, thank you for being proactive because anything that we did earlier...
Yeah, normally, normally we would just bid this to have it ready for summer 2026. But we want to, when we talked to the contractors, they said, yes, I would do that now just to avoid any nonsense.
All right, so that's coming to the board on the 21st.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Item number five on our agenda is our triennial, I can't say it.
Triennial Wellness.
Triennial Wellness Assessment Review. It's Johan Morata, Assistant Superintendent of Admin and Innovation. And Jamie's staying up there. Go address the board.
All right. Good evening. Triennial. Oh, that was the board. The district is required to do an assessment. The state provides a template for that and we follow the template. So the last time this was done was three years ago. So, excuse me. So we completed that this year. It must be shared publicly by June 30th. So we will do that by posting on the transparency page on the website. That's one of the options. Some of the other options are to send it as a link in a newsletter, but we would like it to be a living link. That's not just sent on time. So we conducted the triennial wellness assessment, we evaluated some programs. We also looked at some of the language of the policy. And the board has reviewed and already looked at some of the policy changes that were suggested. Some of them were just little language things like the food pyramid is no more, it is my plate now, for example. So those things were changed, but then there were also some other changes as well. We took a look at, we chose to look at the Michigan State Board of Education model for the local school wellness policy and compare that to the one from Neola. We found a lot of things that were similar and then a few things that were different. And some of the things that were different, I think, will provide some pathway for some things. And some of them, we thought that we would be doing a little bit better than the model policy. So that was good to see.
So the state actually provides us forms that we fill out as an assessment template. And these are some of the target items that we worked on. Under nutrition, promotion, and education, we obviously want to expand opportunities for nutrition education. Some of the things we're thinking about, like if the budget allows, field trips to a farmer's market, for example, for the elementary students. We're going to have a lot, a lot more hands-on cooking demonstrations. Chef Jesse, who's our new head chef, is also a parent in the district and he's very much on board with this. He wants to show the kids that you can eat healthy and fresh and it still tastes good. We're going to look at doing nutrition assemblies. And then we're also going to incorporate it into the PE and STEAM curriculum, especially at the elementary levels. They don't currently have that. So those are some of the things we're working on for that. For physical activity and school-based wellness initiatives, we're going to do a new staff training. We actually polled some of our staff and they weren't even aware of a wellness policy. So we want to make sure that we get that training done this next year. And then we're also going to explore school-based activities to enhance student wellness. Under nutrition guidelines and food policies, one of the big things we want to do is eliminate the birthday treats. We all love them as children growing up, but it's just not healthy. And then when you look at students who are socially or economically disadvantaged, it's not really fair to them if they can't afford to bring cupcakes into the classroom. So by eliminating that, we'll be able to, they'll find other fun ways to celebrate birthdays.
We'll still celebrate birthdays, definitely. Those are important for kids and they can bring in a ticket. But we have all kinds of allergies for kids. And Jamie really has had issues before with frosting, staining carpeting, and those types of things that happen when kids eat in classrooms. So they will, will have, still have the celebrations. And some of our schools are already moving in this direction with pencils or erasers or bracelets or those types of things. Yeah. Sometimes parents will donate a book and read to the class or something like that.
And if you've ever, that's the elementary schools during mealtime. They're, they're, they are given certain components to make a balanced meal. And sometimes they don't want their apple or sometimes they don't want their milk. So they have a shared table. Basically, it's the refrigerated cooling line that they put these items on. And then students who may not have enough to eat or want more can pull from that food table. We're also going to, we're going to look at implementing that at the middle and high school too next year. And then lastly, marketing and promotion of healthy choices. We do have a lot of posters and branding when you walk into the food service lines at the middle and high school levels. We're going to really look at taking Little Lyle and promoting this at the elementary levels. And also, like, one of the members of our team is the PE teacher from Dory. She says, I don't really even teach anything about healthy eating or anything in my gym class. It's all about physical activity. So they want, they're excited about adopting some type of curriculum even for the PE class to promote healthy living. And so like we said, all of these initiatives are going to be happening next school year.
The document is a living document, so we'll continue to add to it. It has a lot on our minds for us to add every year going forward. Yeah, we do have it here. It's available to view. It's the state's forehanding. So you can see some of the things that were sustained and the difference between the guidelines and policies and then actions, steps, and goals with timelines that were being stored this year.
Any questions?
So I will say, there used to be a shared table at the high school until COVID hit and then I don't think it ever came back. But it was very popular, especially for kids that were staying after school. And they would grab some extra snacks for after school. And it was, you know, not everybody eats like the lunch that you would have to take when you're, when you're taking going through the first line or whatever the line is. So I think it's great. I don't think they were good.
All right, thank you very much. Item number six is our non-bargaining salaries schedule presentation information review. Mr. Eric Lee, Deputy Superintendent of Talent Development and Management.
Good evening, thank you. Everybody enjoyed the snowstorms today. Exciting, I know, for this beautiful, bony April day. I don't, I don't be happy as long as I mean. So thank you very much for having me here. I'm excited to talk to you about this, the non-bargaining unit salaries schedule. I know you have a lot of information in your packet about the background, but I do want to kind of run through that just very quickly at the meeting. I'm sure you've seen this and hopefully have had a little bit of time to digest it. This is information that we did share with the finance subcommittee where we've had some opportunity for discussion in that committee structure. As you all know, the majority of our employees here in West, in the West Bloomfield School District, they are represented by a collective bargaining agreement. And in that collective bargaining agreement, you know that they have a very specific and negotiated salary schedule progression that they follow. That is always determined through the bargaining process, as you know, some of you are involved in that. However, we have some employees that are not part of a bargaining unit. We call them non-bargaining unit employees. I know it's fancy name, like we're very creative on that, I guess. And those employees have traditionally been employed under individual employment contracts with the terms and the conditions are negotiated individually. Board members, you are all familiar with those because we bring them in the spring and we ask that the board approve, we call them individual employment contracts. You see them each year and you approve those renewals based on the recommendation that you get. So interestingly enough, on Tuesday, July 30th, 2024, the Michigan Supreme Court issued a decision in a case that's called Batista versus the Office of Retirement Services. The case was filed originally in 2019 and it went before the state's highest court actually twice. So it reached the Supreme Court twice. It's made its way through the court process and up to the Supreme Court twice. And the case involved what is called a normal salary increase. It's called an NSI. It's the normal NSI rule that the Office of Retirement Services implemented for school administrators and administrative assistants. So the NSI rule, it limited the amount of compensation that school administrators and administrative assistants could count toward their pension credit calculations. So I'm not sure how familiar you are with how pensions in the Michigan school, public school employee retirement, MIPsers, system are calculated. But they're based on an employee's three highest years, an average of the three highest years of compensation across your career. So that's, that's how they look at that. With this NSI calculation, it limited, in many people's eyes arbitrarily, the amount of compensation that could be counted toward that calculation. So the case was filed by seven current and/or former retired school administrators and also the MAS, the Michigan Association of School Administrators, the superintendents association. And the ultimate ruling by the Michigan Supreme Court on the 30th of July was that the NSI is unlawful, that the ORS did not have the authority or the mandate to calculate pensions based on the NSI. So that was a win, I guess, for the administrators and they were pretty happy with that. However, as is always the case, it did not come without complication. Because while it ruled that the NSI was unlawful, the court went on to clarify that school employee pensions should be determined in large part based on their, and this is in quotes, this is from the Supreme Court, on their normal salary schedule. Now, if you're part of a collective bargaining agreement, we know what those normal salary schedules are. We have them in all of our bargaining agreements. They are, you see the steps, you see the length, like we know how that progresses. However, those folks that are not part of a collective bargaining agreement do not have, up until now, and most school districts have a normal salary schedule. Meaning there are not steps defined, there is not a delineated progression of how salary applies to certain positions. So the Supreme Court said that normal salary schedule means, there were really four things, four defining criteria to define what they meant by normal salary schedule. It had to be a written document, so it had to be written down. It had to be something that was visible, right? It had to be established by statute or approved by a reporting unit's governing body. So obviously, the Board of Education is the governing body for school districts, so that's you. It had to be a reflection of the time and sequence of compensation. So how does this, from year one to year two to year three, for example? And it conforms to a norm, rule, or principle. In other words, it applies to a general job description or a job classification rather than just a specific individual. So for example, if you hold a job called a coordinator in our school district, you are not part of a bargaining unit, but coordinators should be on a normal salary schedule for coordinators. That's what the Supreme Court has mandated and has laid out before us. So it is, you know, we've reviewed this, of course, with the district's legal counsel. I would also tell you that every school labor attorney that I've been in contact with also recommends the same, as well as the MAS, the School Board Association, your group, as well as the MAS have said that school districts, the correct path forward, how to correct this issue, is to make sure that we have a normal salary schedule that is approved by the Board of Education and followed for non-bargaining unit employees, just like we have salary schedules for collective bargaining groups. So you have in your packet, we've been working on this, I've been doing a lot of research. We've been doing a lot of, you know, kind of deep dive into this, looking at comparable, you know, positions and what, just really turning over everything to bring to you what you have in this packet. And I will hopefully bring it for approval on the 21st. It is the normal salary schedule for the 19 employees that are non-bargaining unit employees in our school district. Now, the interesting part is this does not, so I want to refer back to what I said earlier, that these folks, you're used to as, as board members, having their individual contracts in front of you. This normal salary schedule does not change that. The board will still need to see and approve individual employment contracts. Those employees will still have individual employment contracts. But they will be built around a normal salary progression instead of individually the way that they are now. To be, you know, in conformity with that Batista decision from the Supreme Court. The superintendent and board still maintain the authority to determine an individual salary. The superintendent upon hiring has the authority to recommend placement on that schedule and then we build that individual contract around that placement. We usually, if you recall, we usually bring the individual contracts at the end of the bargaining cycle. So they're usually presented to the board after all of our bargaining units have settled. So that's been our normal routine and I think that's, you know, that's my recommendation for how we ought to continue. So on the 21st, you're going to, it's going to be on the agenda. I'll present that for approval by the board. I think that's it. You have the recommended normal salary schedule for these positions. These, these are based on current salaries. They are in line with what we already do for those folks. But again, it creates that progression that the Supreme Court has really mapped out as the roadmap for how the result is issued.
Let me just ask one question. Some of the individual contracts are one-year contracts, some are two, some are three.
Correct.
They expire June 30th.
Some do.
Yeah, so are you concerned of, I mean, I don't, we're only at the beginning of April, but do those have to? I know we did them like in August last year because it was running so late. Or do, does it have to be done in June or how do you feel about that with people that are one-year?
Yeah, we have, we have some options. And one of, what we did last year, we did issue them, we did approve them in August, you are correct. And what we did was we issued a two-month or a three-month extension of those one-year contracts through August. We knew that, you know, it was just, we were still bargaining. So we didn't want to bring them until all of those collective bargaining agreements were settled. So we extended three months, that's easy to do, it's not really problematic. They, they get paid at the same salary then, there's no change to their salary. They just continue at the same amount until we decided to don't buy our own. So that's very, it's easy to do. Not, it's not, I'm not concerned.
Okay. So you did very well explaining all that.
Well, it's a, it's a complex issue and I do understand that, that, you know, it's, it's a little...
I mean, I've heard it like three or four times at conferences, but you did a really good job. So thank you. Nick, do you have a question?
Yes. This normal salary schedule, does this mandate a guaranteed increase in salary or just a potential increase in the pension?
It doesn't mandate, it does not mandate that the board increase a person's salary every year. It's just like how we negotiate with a collective bargaining. It doesn't, like, just because there's a salary schedule built in there, we negotiate over steps, we negotiate over percent increase. This is, I think, Dr. Hersch, you should view this, in my opinion, in the same way, which is that it's the normal progression, but you still have the authority to say, okay, we're not granting steps this year. Or we don't want to add a percent to the salary schedule. Or you also have flexibility more to say, maybe it's half steps or maybe it's an off-schedule payment. Like there are lots of ways to really tackle compensation. This does not define what that has to be, but it does solidify the progression, the normal salary schedule in order to meet those requirements of the Batista decision.
Okay, two more questions.
Yep.
And the sale of the potential salary increase is determined by the board after the bargaining units determine what the other units?
Yes, that's how we've always done it since I went here. In seven years, we've always done that at the end after the unit's settled.
Is it done collectively all 19 or as individual contracts?
We, we have always presented them all together. I think that, you know, unless, I've not heard anything different in, in terms of what the will of the board is. I know that if that is the will of the board to do something different, I'm sure that you will let Dr. Bazey know and she will let me know. But I would caution the board, if that is even really a thought that you're entertaining, I do not recommend it. There are some serious concerns that come about, that you're really wading into employment law, we're really wading into contract, there are lots of intricacies and I think...
You almost get into evaluation, huh?
You do. Also, there are, like, certain contracts are addressed in the, the, in 1229 of the revised school code, it talks about like administrator contracts, steps that you have to take. There's a lot that really needs to be considered and it, I think it's really a slippery slope if we get into that. That's my own opinion, so I'm just offering that as your HR department leader. And I'm just saying, I think that, you know, there's a reason we do it that way. And I think that, you know, absent any, any directive from the board as a whole, I don't think we should change.
No, I get, I get what you're saying, is that these are people at the top of the totem pole, so to speak.
Some, some not all.
A lot, a lot.
Yeah.
And, and some of these might be really excellent and doing great and some might be just going along for the ride. And how do we differentiate them?
Well, yeah, I, I thank, thank you for that feedback. I would also tell you that, you know, you evaluate only one employee, right? In this school district as the board. I know you had your governance for a couple, they probably talked about that, I don't know if they do or not, but, but, you know, I know that it's not the board's role really to do that. I, and I know you understand that because you just had your governance for a couple. But, so I'm just saying things you already know, I'm not, I don't mean to be doing that. But I think we have to be very careful. I just think that we have to be very careful in that situation because...
Can I, can I add one thing? It's the same thing like on a teacher's salary schedule, like whenever a bargain happens or any bargaining group. It's, it'd be hard to delineate, well, these teachers get a step and these teachers don't or these secretaries get a step. Our job is to evaluate and to make sure that people who are, there's only effective now. Effective or highly, right, that they're doing their job. So the, the idea is people who are doing a good job are here and that's why they're here. And if they're not, then it's just the contract mom wasn't willing to, you know, make a change.
All right, Kristen.
So when I hear you that we only have one employee, I know that. But we are, but we are responsible for the budget, right? And making sure, and so I thank you for the clarification that this isn't an automatic. And just because that's my concern is that we have bargaining groups that are negotiating contracts and we also need to be mindful that this isn't, hey, you don't have to and you just automatically get a step. So I want to make sure that that's there. I also, what Dr. Hersch said was that we have a huge group of these nineteen...
Nineteen.
Nineteen, thank you. Nineteen employees from here to here. Nineteen, thank you, nineteen employees from here to here, and that's a 2.5%. Here is a lot, right? And so just to kind of, like, is there...
In terms of the step amount, you know?
Yeah, right, and just, right, so then we're just, I don't like the idea of just going bucketing everyone together too, because it is such a wide range.
Um, thank you, I mean, the, the 2.5%, the, like, in determining what those, obviously there's a decision factor, right, in presenting this to you about what, what is the right amount for those steps. 2.5% is based on really our history of what the raises that we've given to this group in the past, so it's in line with that. I think I gave you a comparison in the packet, did I, did I give you that? With what a step increase is across all of our units. So it is significantly lower than the average step increase, one, like, one of our units, a step is really on average six and a half, almost six and a half percent, right? So in my opinion, I feel that it's in line, and it is, that's why I feel it is in line, that's why I brought it to you that way, because it's aligned with the types of raises that we've given. It is also, it's really undervalued, honestly, compared to our other steps in our bargaining units. So that's really the basis for how that was developed.
I don't want to get into the weeds, and I think we already are, but I just wanted to be kind of, that there was 180 two-day contracts, and then there's very long contracts, and there's many things in between. And there's a lot more to look at.
As cost of living is like 2.5%.
I don't know, I don't know, these, this age age.
I know it's going to be 2%.
Who knows?
Do some of these non-bargaining units, are they not all full-year, like athletic trainer?
Uh, she is.
She's, she's...
No, she's not, she's 200 to 100 days. Most, other than that one, I think are all...
School specialists?
Let me just, they're, they are.
But many of our, but many of our bargaining contracts are bargain contracts, except for a few people in them, are 180 something days, I don't even know that, 84, 86?
184.
184.
Sorry, is our teachers, there is our 183, admin assistants, they vary, we have 112 of them.
So there's, there's a lot of variations, so...
All of our administrative principals are all full-year employees. Everybody on this list is except for the athletic trainer.
I have one clarifying question. So just to be clear, on April 21st, we would be approving this schedule, not necessarily approving that you get the step next year.
You're just approving, correct.
That's when the contracts come out.
That's correct.
I just wanted to, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Because yes, they need the approval so that when they update the contracts, it gets put into the contract, does that make sense? Yeah, that's right.
So thank you.
You're welcome.
You did a great job.
All right, thanks.
So let me say this first, that I believe that everybody, all y'all, should make as much money as you possibly can be for the job that you're doing, so that's first and foremost. But I also think too, as an employer, we have to look at our budget constraints. So we are currently at minimum number one, and we have a $1.5 million deficit, that's facts. So when we talk about a step increase and 2.5% on those persons with contracts that make the most money in the district. So if I take our maximum out of 2.5%, we're looking at an increase of about maybe $4,000 or $5,000. So when we look at it from apples to apples, while the process may be the same, there is no financial special that accompanies this work that says, what are we looking at in the future? What kind of increase are we looking at that will hit our budget? Because right now, we don't know.
Well, let's see, probably we'll do that.
They haven't done it.
Well, because we're not, we're not approving contracts.
Okay, but, I'm just helping, yeah, I'm looking. So, and then when I also look at those persons on the schedule, then some of those persons, again, make the most, right? So some of the persons on this schedule make almost two and a half times those that are on other step schedules. And that's facts, that, that's just facts. So when I think about what was recommended and not required, because the government or from the lawsuit, it was recommended that there is a step schedule, but not required. So there's no way that we are required to do this, and we will be one of the first districts to do this type of step process.
No, we, we will be one of the last. We've, we've... Okay. If you've been at MASB, you've been talking about it for a while.
Deborah, just so you know, what really impacts is staff that, that get promoted for within. So let's say a teacher becomes a principal, and then the principal becomes an assistant superintendent. When they go to retire, they're going to say, oh, you're an assistant superintendent, there's not a salary schedule, so your retirement is going to be paid based on your principal pay. They're going to say, so they're going to take, we had an employee who retired, it took us four months to ensure that they got their pension check. Luckily, that employee was able to live, you know, for the four months without the pension check, but it was because we did not have a normal salary schedule index. We didn't have a salary schedule for that person's position. We had to work extremely hard to be able to show that this person moved up the ranks because they kept wanting to default back to the secretary contract and say that their pension is based on the lower three years. So the salary schedule protects people within. If you don't stay within the district, there's no harm. So if I'm at West Bloomfield, there's no salary schedule index, or let's say there's just never a pay increase, employees will just leave to another district, that's it. Once you move districts, it resets. So even if I was making $100,000 in West Bloomfield, and I made $150,000, the normal salary schedule index doesn't apply. So the only way, that's why MASB labeled their article, "How to Keep, How to Keep People in Your District", because if you don't have that salary index, that salary schedule, that's where the trouble comes in when the employee tries to retire. So again, it's just a salary schedule that Eric, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, looked at the market value, because the positions are not the same. We can say somebody makes double, well, the roles aren't the same. A para doesn't make what a teacher makes, a teacher doesn't make what a principal makes, because the duties, you know, they're unique, and they, they require different, you know, different levels, yeah, different hours, different education, I mean, we can get into all of that, right? But, so he looked at the, he looked at where everybody was at, because basically he didn't set a salary schedule based on like hopes and dreams, it's where everybody's at applying 2.5%. Because again, if an employee comes to us in year one, if that's the ceiling, because they make, you know, they make a certain amount, well, that's, that's going to be very hard for the district to retain talent, you know? So the salary index is based on where they're at today, you know, in, in the sense of, this is the salary schedule. He also looked at surrounding districts, looked at what the pay is. But again, you know, there's not a current step schedule, so that's why you tend to see between 2% and 3% raises for non-bargaining unit members, because where usually there's a step schedule, and then something hopefully is then put on the salary schedule, like a percent or whatever it might be for bargaining. But again, that's why we wait, we wait to ask for contract approval till all the bargaining units are done. We don't come to you before, because we want to see what all the other bargaining units have settled there, and then remain consistent with that, that's the goal.
But it doesn't lock you into it.
Yeah, I...
But the big fact of the, the schedule is, if we look at the page where you have the job title, the minimum and maximum, that would really satisfy whatever the recommendation would be without the steps. Because again, we have a, a high school principal, you have 118, that is, would be considered the market. The max would be 139, I would assume that would be the market based on your research. So that is a schedule in itself without the steps.
I don't believe it satisfies, though, the definition with the, the time and sequence. So number three from the Supreme Court's ruling says it's the time and sequence of compensation, meaning year to year. I don't believe that satisfies it, I don't, our legal counsel does not believe that either, and that has not been their recommendation. And just to be clear, I do want, I appreciate your, your feedback about, you know, addressing the budget and so on, but it also plays into, Kirsten, what you just said, is that I want to be clear, I'm not recommending a salary for any employee at this time. That comes when you see their individual contracts, right? Like, this is just getting in place the salary schedule that meets those requirements that are very clear from the Supreme Court, that need to be set out in order to address this issue. So while they ruled that, that NSI is, they, it was sort of like a mixed bag, really, in the ruling. They said, okay, the NSI doesn't, you don't have the authority to do that, we were happy about that. However, you need to have a, a regular salary schedule for these positions. And so that's all we're presenting is that. It's not saying that anybody gets a raise for next year or anything like that. That comes when you see the recommendation of those individual contracts, which happens again after we settle, at least in our district, unless, you know, there's different direction, I guess, but, after we settle those bargaining. So by then, you know your budget, you know how much those bargaining units cost, you know really what you have to spend, and you know where you are, like, that's... So this is not, this is not recommending that anyone makes any certain amount of money, does that make sense? This is putting that in.
On that slippery slope of the 19, please help me understand, why is it a slippery slope to break out the individual contracts, or...
Well, there's...
I mean, I'm asking, Kirsten...
I, I have a whole bunch of reasons why I believe that's true, and...
Because you're probably stepping to crossing a line and getting into a legal issue.
First of all, our individual contract, we have an individual contract already with each of those people. There are notification timelines that are contained in those, that if you don't follow, that you would be in reach of those employment contracts, so you're entering into employment law. Potentially non-renewing school administrative contracts, that's defined in that statute, and you will potentially run afoul of that. I believe that we run the risk of being arbitrary and capricious, and having really some liability when we pick and choose who gets it or who not. To Daniel's point, if I said, you teacher, I don't like the work you're doing, but you teacher, I like your work, and I give you a step and I don't give you a step, that really sets up the district, it really opens us up to liability and understanding, why are we making these decisions? Is it, what is it? If the reason for doing that is about addressing an employee's performance, that's not the correct way to address employee performance, first of all. We have systems, we have evaluations, and we have steps that have to be taken to address employee performance. If it's about, we have too many positions and we need to lay off employees, we have the correct way to issue a reduction in force, there are...
And why that should be at the board's disposal, that comes as a review.
That's right, so all, I, I mean, there are, there are a host of reasons that I think really contribute to my saying that to you. That's what I would say as your HR professional leader. I think that our district legal counsel would echo those sentiments. And really what we start wading into is a whole area of employment law that is very, it is complex at times, and it is very important that we navigate that correctly in order to not expose the district to unnecessary liability. That's just off the top of my head.
That's too, that's too...
I'm going to move on.
Can I, I just have a clarifying question. So when we did in the contract renewals, you mentioned that some are one-year and some are two-year, and so, but we lumped them together, so then when we renew, it's just extending it to a year for another two-year, or would it be one?
It can, uh, it depends, yeah, it can be, yes.
It depends on...
So every contract has a...
You can't ill say the terms of the contract.
It says the term, like, every contract has, it'll, you know, the, the salary, and it will say the, what the term is of that contract, so it's, it's explicit in each one, when you see it, yes.
And so we get to see those when they...
Oh, yeah, you see those.
You can look at the, you can look, you can go look at the August special meeting, the first week of August, and we'll look at everything.
Thank you.
And those are colored as well. All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a new...
It's a...
I know, it's a different approach, thank you.
Item number, oh no, item number seven is our school of choice window for 25 to 26, second window. There's just got a lot of CC Google页 services for our...
Good evening, Go Tigers. I love those Tigers.
I love those Tigers.
No?
They play, is it snowing or something?
I don't know if they play today, but I'm talking about baseball.
Oh, Tigers.
Tigers, yeah, like the baseball team.
I was like, no, no.
Not Auburn, no. Detroit Tigers, support the Mets. Thank you very much for having me here this evening. I'm here to talk about schools of choice, second, potential second window. So back in December, the Board of Education approved 105 K5 students' criteria-based scheme, 15 for sixth through eighth grade criteria-based scheme as middle school, and then 85 for ninth and 10th grade criteria-based. Since that time, we're excited to say that with the K5, we're really close to securing all 105 students. The last time we checked, we had 73 that met criteria and are either fully enrolled or are close to being completed with their enrollment, and then 27 first through fifth graders. So we're really close, we're actually in the process of moving more students off the waitlist. We still have at least 25, I think, that are on the waitlist, waiting to get off, calling almost every other day to see when they're off the waitlist. So that's really exciting. Middle school was super easy, we, we were able to get 15 enrolled very quickly because the waiting list was extremely long. And then at the high school, things look a little differently there. At the high school level, with our 85 spots, right now, 33 ninth graders have met criteria and have started the enrollment progress or finished it, and at 10th grade, only three. So you might be wondering, like, what's the deal? It's, the candidates that have applied just are not meeting the criteria. We definitely had enough candidates, they just weren't meeting our criteria. So we're seeking 49 more eligible candidates. And that leads us to a little bit about last year, just so you know, some data that's interesting. Last spring, we had 94 students apply in the second window when it was approved by the Board of Education. 37 of those students met the criteria. If you do the math, we might still be a little short of those 85, but my hope is that we really get it out there and get, get the right candidates to apply. So with that, we'll be bringing to the board table in our public session the request to approve a second window for our ninth and 10th grade students with the same criteria for our ninth and 10th grade schools of choice, not to exceed the original 85 students that were approved. Short and sweet.
So just a, a comment. I would like more to consider moving forward, maybe lowering our reliability at, of school choice at high school. Only because this is at least the third year that we've had open a second window, and our largest groups are finally leaving, and hopefully the enrollment will start to stabilize. So if we can't reach 85, maybe we need to like make something just to not be so reliable on that many new school of choice kids.
Is that number you gave us though, in the beginning, based on the graduation, the groups coming out and the groups coming in?
So that number of the 85 that we recommend, that's based on that, and also enrollment projections, and also like what we need to make sure that we maintain our programming.
So it's a calculated number?
Yes, definitely not. It's also based on like, you know, we, we've heard the will of the board is to right-size and make sure that we're not overplayed with schools of choice. So if you, if you thought, if you think about the last presentation we had, we, over the course of three years, continued to taper back, while also being mindful of what we'd like to have for enrollment.
And not hurt our bargaining.
Yeah, no, it's balancing it, this will maybe slowly taper more at the high school, just at the high school, or even more at the elementary, less at the high schools, somehow.
I think organically it's going to be less this year. But I, we, it's, it's, again, it's a balance between having, you know, comprehensive high school, your offerings look different if you have 1,000 or 14,000. But I, I do think we, we hear you and understand that, how trying to, you know, find that fine line to make sure that our budget is healthy, and, and, but, again, they have to meet the criteria. So we're not changing, we're not changing any of the requirements for the second window. And like I said, I, I don't see us, we're probably going to be closer to 60.
All I'm saying is like, we're not meeting what we originally had planned we need, is what I'm saying. So maybe we need to make other changes to not be so reliable, because we can't count on, that's what I'm saying.
Historically speaking, may I speak?
Yeah.
Historically speaking, I don't want to speak out of turn. So last year was, I think, the first year or the second year that we only offered schools of choice for ninth and 10th grade. And if you go back historically, when we opened the second window and had ninth through 11, we filled those spots easily. And not easily, but we filled them, so that's one of the factors that's coming into play here for the last two years.
Plus also our, our criteria at the elementary level, that is also...
Yeah.
That's why we're not 15%. Point taken. But you know, and I know you guys are all doing the study, or somebody has had... But you know what? And I know you guys are all doing the study, Eric, or somebody is having, you know, another enrollment study or live birth and all of that.
Yeah.
There is less kids in Oakland, we all know.
In Michigan?
In Michigan, but for sure Oakland.
In the, in the world.
And there is less, uh, students to pull from between private schools. Charter's not as much around here, but private schools and.
Homeschooling.
Yeah, homeschooling and all of that.
Yeah.
Public school, school of choice, there's just less kids.
Homeschooling.
Yeah, homeschooling too is a big one now. So, all right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
That's the next board meeting. Number eight on our agenda is our Neola updates for our 25 first read after that, as the superintendent of the Board.
Well, the policy committee made up of Stacy Brickman, Deborah Adams, and Ashley Davis, we met with our Neola rep on March 18th um, for our February 2025, volume 39, number two updates. Um, we reviewed all of those with Wayne and came to agreements on recommended selections for, for that policy. Prior to the meeting, I also had applicable, um, staff look at ones that were related to their areas. Some of the highlights of some of the changes that you're going to see, um, in this policy update. There's one thing under the bylaws for technical corrections that allows the superintendent to make technical, uh, corrections. Maybe a name has changed, maybe a title has changed. These are things that are, don't change the essence of the, the policy. But I will tell you, if I make any change, I, I would send that to the board, uh, via an update to say, hey, these technical corrections were made and, and send those on. But this, this bylaw update allows us to do that. Um, there's a lot of policy around the earned time, sick time, uh, law that was really recently passed. Neola is actually recommending that we abstain from this at this current time because there's already updates to the, to the updates. So they really recommend. The good thing with West Bloomfield School District is for most of our bargaining units, we already provide, uh, sick time that's, that is in excess of what the laws were requiring. So it doesn't really apply to our professional staff. It doesn't apply to like our paraprofessional group, our secretary, our administrative assistant group. So there's a very small group of individuals like crossing guards, um, lunch monitor, things like this where it would apply to. So, um, Eric Whitney is ensuring that we're compliant with the law, but again, Wayne White recommended we will drop on those. There's other policy updates, um, with regards to field trip and district sponsored trips. It talks about, a little bit about, um, transportation. Um, there's also immunization policy that is really just related to the Michigan Department of Education. Um, and it's, you know, current, current changes to law. Um, administration of medication, Epi pens, um, and then some updates to, um, our policy with regards to student suicide prevention, mental health. Um, graduation requirements, we have FASF language that's been added, uh, due to us being, being recipient of the FASF grant, uh, which is, you know, providing funding to help educate students with regards to filling out, uh, the FASF. There's also some language with personnel records, um, that again is just related to the Public Employment Relations Act, also known as PARO. And to make sure we're current with that law. Also, um, food services, wellness, those are some USDA language that's been added. And then lastly, policy 8640 is rescinded because now that's covered, um, in the policy 2340. So what you'll see in your board packet is all of the update recommended changes that are highlighted in green or red. And basically, we also included for your knowledge, just what our current selections are. So those are like in black. They just let you know, this is the current selection, because every district picks different options, so they give you a basic template. And then that's just for, for reference of in the past, what was, what was previously selected. Um, so again, the policy committee reviewed that. We're recommending, uh, this is the first read, we're recommending the second read on April 21st and approval, um, for those policy updates.
Do you have any questions? Wasn't that wonderful reading?
It was actually a long session.
Oh my God.
It was fun.
I, I want to thank you guys for being on that committee. That is not a committee I want to be on, ever.
All right, well, if anything comes up, any questions? If you've reached out. Um, agenda item number nine is our preliminary, preliminary view of SIS layer fund's project assumptions. As soon as the Cooper Executive Director of Financial Services will address the board. All right, uh, good evening. So these are our preliminary budget assumptions for 2526. We don't know a lot yet, unfortunately. Um, so this is what we're going to start with. Uh, we are looking at student enrollment of 4572. This is a reduction of 194 FTE from the March, uh, 2025 state aid report. That's currently what we're getting paid on. The blended membership remains at a 90101 from the 2025 comp rate, so that would be, uh, the winter count and then fall count. The state foundation, um, currently don't have enough information at this time to come up with an estimate. So we're still going to wait to see, uh, with the legislature, uh, what proposals they come out with. Um, section 147 C1, the MIBS's UAL, that is going to be budgeted at 15.02. It's an increase from 10.58, uh, which is, uh, what we were receiving in 2425. This has no budget impact. This is an in and an out. Um, but it will show that our revenue will be higher, but our expenditures will also be higher to match that. 147 A4 MIBSers, um, that's the reduced UAL. It's going to be a reduction of $2,74,982. Um, I'm going to get into this a little bit in a couple more slides, what this is a result of. Um, if you remember, they said they were reducing our, uh, they didn't give us a foundation last year. They were reducing the rate by 5.75 percent. They didn't actually reduce the rate this year. They gave us this $2 million to make up for that. And then they put the 5.75 percent reduction into law, but we're going to look at that in a couple slides. So just keep that in mind. Um, the IDEA entitled grants, uh, what we typically do every year is we budget those at 85 percent of the 2425 amounts. We're never really sure exactly what we're going to get in those two areas. And then the at-risk amount, um, we're going to budget that at the same, um, for the number of years we've always received an increase. But we like to be conservative and start out with just the amount that we have in the current year. Uh, for expenditures. Retirement is going to be budgeted at 29.91, which is a, a decrease of 1.45, or about $178,000 from last year. And as I mentioned before, they put into law a 5.75 decrease. We'll get into that in a minute. Um, there's an increase, uh, 2.9 to the legislative insurance hard cap. Uh, that will be about $156,000 increase to the amount of insurance that we pay. Our liability insurance is about a 10% increase, or about $35,000. We have a decrease, um, in our workers' compensation insurance for next year, which will launch at about $18,000. An increase of 1.5 percent, about $26,900 in our custodial contract, and that is, uh, we will put that out for bid. And that is the approved amount for next year. Um, the sinking fund village, which we're going to do in November, we're going to have election costs of about $80,000 for that, because there aren't any other elections going on at that point. We have an increase in instruction of 142,000, and that's for the new K5 reading curriculum. The cost is actually a lot higher than that, but, um, state has done a really great job of finding grants to cover most of the cost. This is the amount that's left that will be going into the general line. And right now, um, Eric is still working through staffing, but he, he is identified with the help of our building principals. He's identified between four and six staff. That's, um, through attrition. We will not be replacing those positions. Um, we don't have the exact number right now because they aren't finished with staffing. So they're still working through that, and that would be a savings approximately anywhere between 400 and 600,000 dollars. And that's all the changes. So this is a diagram, um, showing the difference between the 2425 and the proposed. I probably shouldn't have said proposed. It's not proposed. It is actually what the rates will be for 2526. You can see there's four different parts to the retirement amount. The first is the pension normal. Um, it is going to increase by 1.72 percent. The pension UAL, that's where we're getting the decrease of 5.75 percent, and that's what they put into law. The health normal, um, it's going to go up 2.58. There's no increase for you for the healthy UAL. So that's where you get, when you total it down, you get the 31.36, which was what we're paying this year compared to what we're going to pay next year is 29.91, showing the reduction of 1.45. Now, the 147A, what I mentioned, the $2 million that they gave us, that accounted for the 5.75 this year. We will not be getting that next year. So that's an increase of 5.75. So if you add those together, what we're looking at overall is an increase of 4.3 percent. With the loss of the 2 million. And then the, and then the loss.
That's why we always ask our increases to be in the per pupil combination allowance. That's, that's what we had really expressed to our legislature is that, because you see, though, there's different retirement costs. One can go down, but the other ones can go up. And the only thing that's legislated into law is the pension UAL. The other ones are not. So that's why it's really important to advocate, because that increases on the per pupil.
Very hard to decrease per pupil funding.
Yeah, it's very hard to cut.
Where in this, it's all game. Wow, that's disappointing. Anyone have any questions on that? Did anyone understand?
Don't, don't be discouraged. We have to answer your job.
Yeah, Lancing.
Yeah.
Just talk to Lancing.
On the high, on the good thing though, is our employees are paying the less, like that 3%. Yes, and then we. For their.
For their retirement.
For their, uh, healthcare portion. Yes, for their retirement. Well, that's good for them. Yes, that 3%, um, we did our first reimbursement in March. We're going to do another reimbursement in June, and then the final one will be in September. And then effective October 1st, we will no longer withhold that from employees' checks. So they're still taking it from, all the, to the end of this fiscal year of the state? Yes. Yes. Okay. And we can't say that we have enough to be up to reimburse them 100% through the year. Um, we don't know yet because they, they based our payments on a year ago, um, what we were, our payroll for a year ago, not the current payroll. So really, really not sure. I mean, it's going to depend on a lot of factors. Um, you know, we have employees that we now, um, pay that weren't on our books last year. We have less, you know, we have some less employees. So it might work out, it might not. We're not quite sure yet how this is going to roll, but stay tuned. Thank you. And then number 10 on our agenda, and this is going to present our budget to actual. All right, so this is our budget to actual for March. Still with local revenue, same as it has been. We are a little bit hot behind where we were last year, but again, that's, uh, really a factor of our tax payments. And at this point, we're waiting for our large, um, settlement to come in. So we have received the majority from three of our taxing authorities, but we're still waiting for our large sentencing for each unit. And our inter-district. Um, last year's amount would not include, one of the largest things at the inter-district is our PA 18 payment from Oakland Schools. Last year's amount where we're at 49% still to collect, we had not recorded the third quarter payment. We had recorded that third quarter payment this year, so we're down to 28, 27 percent, which will be made up when we receive the final fourth quarter payment. Um, and again, adult, adult ed. Um, adult ed, last year, we made a very large reduction in the budget in the second quarter. So that's why it looks like we had so much left at this point, uh, but we ended up reducing that budget. And then the final line, uh, the other financing uses. Um, we had, uh, last year, we had budgeted a large transfer to, uh, the community ed fund that was reduced at the end of the year. So we never actually made that transfer from community, uh, from general fund over to community ed. That's why it shows that we have, at that point, we have 83 percent of the slots. But we're really close to being aligned with my shirt. Very good. Thank you very much. Um, agenda item number 11, and that was the school board after you proceed through social contract update adoptions. As you all know, during our March 13th, for government surplus, we're creating a new social contract facility at Johnson Valley, Michigan Newship Institute. This adoption is updating our core conduct with our new social contract that we created together. And according to our procedures, our board is to reaffirm our procedures whenever we give a new board. So whenever we have a new board number, we like to reaffirm it usually by April. And so here we are, and I just want to applaud the board, applaud the board, um, for really, really having a wonderful workshop and working together collaboratively and, and being able to talk, and, um, I thought it was very beneficial. So thank you all for being there and for participating. So do we have a motion, Kirsten?
I'd like to make the motion to adopt the updated West Bloomfield Department of Education's social contract and board operating procedure as reviewed and revised during the March 19, 2025 governance session. Our closure alive.
Do a second. Motion to adopt the updated West Bloomfield Department of Education's social contracts and board operating procedures as reviewed and revised during the March 19, 2025 governance session has been moved to second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those of you who say aye.
Aye.
All of the folks saying no, motion passes 720. Thank you everybody. Item 12 was good for the order, or does anybody have? Anybody have anything? Actually, you get your Matilda tickets. First we're going to make, it's going to be fabulous, I'm sure. Um, Matt, you have anything? Matt?
See, I, I've been enjoying the walk-throughs with everyone in the building, and, um, you know. Been a good start after spring break, honestly. A lot of great things, a lot of good activities and things going on.
Okay, and with that, we are adjourned for two. Thank you everybody.